Good evening, everyone. We call the meeting to order at six oh one. Thank you for joining us for the Pobodell City Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the people, to which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of our government.
Let the record reflect, council member last key was absent tonight. There is no report out on closed session. Any conflict of interest, committee members. Seeing none, any changes or additions to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. Be in public comments. Any person wishing to speak in person on an item not listed on the agenda, may so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Lariva Miles. I am a resident of Cloverdale and I've worked here for about sixteen years now. I can't believe it's been that long. And this evening, because of what's been happening in our community since the election, I just wanted to address a question to Chief Parker. Just because I know that there are probably a lot of people who are residents of Cloverdale who would not be willing to come and ask you because they might be fearful of asking or about to ask you, but I believe that Cloverdale is a community policing city and that you do your policing based on working with the community. And so if there are any requests that are made of you or your police department to coordinate with ICE to round people up and try to deport them, is that something that you would cooperate with or how would you handle that situation?
Chief, if you have a phone in public comments, just give any kind of clarifying, but if you choose to, we can give a clarifying comment.
Absolutely sure.
We won't get, please don't need that full session.
The short answer is no, we don't prioritize. And so would I, the law enforcement chiefs association, we send our letters in that effect to the community, we don't prioritize.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we're moving to the two days on, yeah.
So on January thirtieth, the Jefferson will be offering a Girl Scout signups where the lady will be hosted from five thirty to six thirty at the Ukayla Library. And author Dr. Blake Braids will be hosting Assembly for Students at the Jefferson on the topic of a growth mindset. He will later host the Paradise from six to seven P M. On the thirty first of January, there will be Spirit Day, which is Disney Day, and V L A C meeting at eight fifteen in the morning. All schools doing survey called You Truth, which is an anonymous survey asking students and parents their opinions on many topics of the youth, including health, about the education, mental health, and home surroundings. On January twentieth, there was no school because of Martin Luther King Junior. At the high school, they are reducing their one point four million dollar budget. So they are in the process of determining how these adjustments will impact the high school. They are currently under consideration about the bell schedule. They are also looking for people personal services credential that would be a good fit to be the high school counselor. Last night, this month is the last month for people to pre-order a book for sixty dollars before they raise it to seventy dollars that they're in the queue.
Great, thank you. Comments? Seeing none, you know you have to leave. You gotta ask soccer practice, we understand, it's more important. Alright, we'll step right into the presentations. I'm sorry, I'm gonna just get down to E two if you guys don't mind really quick. The employee recognition. Chief, do you want to?
Absolutely. Charity, if you can come up to the podium. So as you know, Teresa Hegarty retired from our community service officer position. We hired Charity Coach. She's had, she has over twenty years of law enforcement experience. Her career began as a cadet with the San Diego, San Diego's junior police. San Diego's junior police, well, attending junior college. She was hired by the Sonoma County Police Department as a traffic control officer and later with the city of San Diego. In two thousand and two, Charity was employed as a full-time lateral dispatcher for the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. Desiring to be a part of patrol, she transitioned into the role of community police officer, community service officer. She served with the civil unit and property evidence room and the river substation before joining the Windsor Police Department as a crime prevention community service officer, ultimately dedicating twenty-two years to the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. During this time, she married her husband Ron, who's here today. Ron is a Raiders fan. Good man, good man. And they have two lovely daughters, Jessie and Kelsey. The entire company is active, is actively involved in tech on the bill. They all do tech on the bill. And both daughters participate enthusiastically in four H where they raise various farm animals. We have a rabbit scare here. Keep it busy for the family. Trade that they all share in doing things together. Charity's thrilled to work for the Cloverdale Police Department. Having grown up around the town of Cloverdale, it feels fulfilling for her to work in the place where most of her family resides. She described it as feeling like coming back home. Thank you for joining us. Everyone, that's it.
Before everyone leaves, I want to say she's a great find for Cloverdale. I was lucky enough to work with her at the sheriff's office for quite a while. And I heard she's coming here on the road, so welcome home.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Me. I just wanted to say a couple of things. You know, I'm known for really getting excited when we have local people coming back to work for our city. And like you may have said, welcome home. You're gonna be an asset. You have a great team to work with and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Alright, well, welcome. Next, we're gonna step into your presentation for Renzino, mosquito and vector control district updates. As of June or October, we have a Peter and phone person, district manager from the Sonoma area. Come to your presentation so we can update on the other all too and just turn over to you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Mayor, council members, staff, appreciate you giving me the time to come and talk a little bit about what we're in Sonoma in twenty twenty-four, introduce myself and hopefully give you a little bit of a snapshot of what we're expecting for twenty twenty-five. For advancing, but just a point, awesome. So just a quick little history about who we are. We've been around for a fairly long time, so our district actually was one of the first in California founded in the Seminole area in response to just the excessive amount of mosquitoes that were impacting people trying to live in those areas. And so actually, our district just started not necessarily as a public health agency, but for largely nuisance control because the area of Brown Bay was completely uninhabitable out of level of mosquitoes. Then the whole malaria cycle got kind of identified and a lot of the districts that were starting to reform based on just the sheer number of mosquitoes pivoted towards malaria control. And ultimately, that's where a lot of the state legislation in foreign mosquito districts came from is trying to come back malaria in California. The good news is, is that effort worked. We haven't had malaria in California since the twenties, so good news there. Unfortunately, we continue to have new and emerging diseases that have impacted us in California, West Nile virus, some tick more disease illnesses as well, and also those that travel around with the roads and the things that are carried by roads. So right now, we serve just under seven hundred and seventy thousand residents. We cover both Marin and Sonoma County and we have over twenty-four board members, so we actually have a very large board. Carol LeGuey is your representative on our board and we're truly, truly appreciative of Carol's time. She brings a fair level of governance and super help with our district and the professionals. Didn't she just finish serving as chair on our board for twenty twenty-four and she was fantastic? So thank you for that appointment and hopefully we'll get to continue working with Carol looking forward. So we have thirty-six full-time employees. We're headquartered in Katati, California. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm not centered on your mic. Okay, we're headquartered in Katati, California, which gives us a nice central location trying to cover Marin and Sonoma County right here on one-on-one. We have thirty-six full-time employees out of that office. We typically bring along between six and eight seasonal employees that help us with that seasonal surge. And then, as I mentioned, we have twenty-four trustees. Right now, we have eighteen. We're still working on some vacancies. That large a board, you typically do have one or two vacancies that you're trying to fill. And since it is a volunteer position, the pay is fairly low. So we do our best to try to keep everybody engaged and are willing to come down to Katati and talk a little bit about anthropology and mosquitoes. As I mentioned, we cover both counties, twenty-three hundred square miles, and our average budget is around twelve million dollars with capital improvements included in there. So what do we do? So obviously, the name of the game and our own title is mosquito control. So a lot of our time is focused on reducing mosquitoes to harmful levels. It's we try to reduce the impact that those mosquitoes can have in terms of transmission diseases. Right now, West Nile virus is really our main focus, but we have other diseases that we also are doing surveillance for. Western equine sephamylitis and stenulus sephamylitis on the mosquito side. And then on the tick side, we're always looking for Lyme disease in our especially specificus ticks, as well as borrelia neomotoyi, also the lesser known relaxing fever style disease that will also sometimes find in both humans and ticks. In addition to that, we have our biologic control programs. We're sharing mosquito fish free charge for all our residents. And we also do yellow jacket control, removing those ground nesting yellow jackets in areas where they might cause problems for people, kids, whoever else might come into contact with them. In addition, we'll do road control advice and consultations. So coming out to properties, working with renters, working with homeowners, property managers, basically identify ways that they can reduce roads from getting into buildings. So our road specialists will come out, do a consultation, provide a report, and then that can help the homeowner either do their road control or work through the services of a pest control operator on the commercial side. In addition, our outreach program is fantastic for the size of the staff we have that are doing it. We get out to just around three hundred different school classrooms every year. That's one person that's doing that. And then we also try to get to as many outreach events as we can, really trying to give the message home about the ways that people can protect themselves from mosquitoes, from vectors, and ultimately, ultimately trying to make them a bit more knowledgeable about those things that are in the environment and then also with exacting. I won't touch on all of the language here associated with integrated vector management if you're familiar with agriculture. It's just another form of integrated pest management. But really, when you, when you distill it all down, what it means is finding the right tools for each problem. So we have this toolbox, the toolbox within, carries within it a variety of different options. And we take the data that's given to us and we prescribe and control treatment for every single different situation. So there's no standardized approach to any one control strategy. Basically, we created based on the information that we're given and the tools that we have available to us. And that gives us a very efficient, effective control strategy as well as one that's very environmentally compatible. The main mosquitoes that we're concerned about, there's actually twenty-three mosquito species, that's twenty-two, I added one to the slide later and just give it to you guys. But we're dealing with twenty-three different species. Of those, really only about a half a dozen are our concern. So we really only focus on those that are going to be a problem for public health and those that also are being created in such large amounts that they become viruses. And really, Helix tarsalus, Helix erythorax, Helix couldings, those are our focus because they transmit West Nile. How do we do it? Well, we have a lot of G I S mapping. So if you're not familiar with G I S, geographic information system. So basically, we map every single potential mosquito breeding habitat. And both Marin and Sonoma County, they get inspected on a regular basis. So that's just around twenty-five thousand different locations now that our technicians are inspecting on a regular basis. If they find immature mosquitoes, if they find them in the water, then we find a control strategy that would be most appropriate for reducing those numbers and preventing them from becoming adults. Here's a quick little screenshot of just numbers, I'm not gonna sit too much on it since I know you guys have a busy schedule tonight and I just want to give you guys a quick update on what we're doing. But here's your twenty twenty-four. We got out to just around sixty-two hundred service requests between both Marin and Sonoma County. We actually had a lower year overall in terms of our service requests and that actually gets reflected in some of our lab numbers and results later on. As I mentioned, two hundred and ninety-three classroom presentations, hitting just around sixty-seven hundred different children. We have curriculums for all different ages up to sixth grade and we hit mosquitoes, ticks, and rodents, yellow jackets as well. We have a different program for every single one, so the teachers can request what they'd like and our education specialists will come on site and do those classes. As I mentioned, in twenty twenty-four, things were a little lower. That's great news. Fantastic news for both Marin and Sonoma County. We have zero West Nile virus incidents in, sorry, in Marin and Sonoma County, so that's great. Unfortunately, we still did see West Nile virus statewide, but overall, the state was also lower than we've seen in the past as well, which is good news. Unfortunately, we still did have twelve fatalities in California and we saw a reduction in our stenulus sephamylitis numbers as well. One little note that I will throw out there is that we unfortunately did see some locally acquired dengue. So that's the second time, the second year running that we've seen locally acquired dengue in Southern California. That's a concern because when we first saw it in twenty twenty-three, there's only three cases. We had twelve cases in twenty twenty-four. The math starts to get a little concerning at that point. Are we gonna see more cases? Are we gonna see that expansion work for? As I mentioned, we do a ton of surveillance that really drives all of our applications, attracts all of our control strategies. We set between fifty and sixty different traps weekly. Those traps are then brought in, those mosquitoes are identified and tested for diseases. And additionally, we are also doing larva sampling, so we're testing and identifying the larvae and the immature mosquitoes that are in the water. Couple of different reasons. One is to find the right control strategy and also just have a better idea of what's going on within our environment, within those mosquito populations, both on the adult and the immature level. We do have tick testing program in-house, so we'll only be testing right at this point, especially specificus. And that's just because the assay that we have is specific for that and is specific for borrelia neomotoyi and borrelia prudorifai, which is Lyme disease. So those are the only things that we have the ability to test for. If we want to test for anything beyond that, it does have to go to the state and we do have some limited partnerships with those entities. So then if we do have concerns about some of the other tick horizons, we can get those tested for the business world. I'd just like to throw this shot in because a lot of people have seen an adult tick, less have seen a nymphal tick. That's a nymphal tick. It's about the size of a sesame seed, so it's very small. The reason why nymphal ticks are a bit of a concern is because they tend to have higher risk in terms of potential for transmission of Lyme disease. There's a lot of reasons, but one of those is that their size, you're just less likely to notice a bite from a nymphal tick versus an adult tick. And then there's also a really cool part of biology of California. There's a lizard within California that where these ticks will feed on it, it actually has a borrelia cytal or bacteriocytal impact on the tick. So if they feed on this lizard between their nymphal and their adult's age, will actually kill Lyme disease bacteria. And it's one of the reasons we see low dengue levels in California versus the Midwest or the East Coast where they have considerably higher levels of Lyme disease. I won't hit too much on this one. All this is on our website, so you can go to msmosquito.org and check out the latest statistics associated with our tick horizons program. Rodents, as I mentioned, is purely a consultation, but we found it to be really advantageous for those people that just don't even know where to start. So we can walk around at home, we can provide advice on areas where we're gonna see rodents having their most ability to impact or get into homes. We can consult with the property owner to identify what is a good option for them, if they do want to move forward to control, whether they want to do it themselves, whether they want to get a commercial pest control operator to do it. But ultimately, we are always happy to give people the information they need to do the work themselves. Yellow jackets, basically, we're only focused on ground nesting yellow jackets. That's because there's a variety of different yellow jackets in our area and these are the only ones that are non-native and also causing problems in terms of humans. There's a variety of positive pollinating yellow jackets that are out there. We don't focus on those at all, purely the ground nesting yellow jackets. So if you call and you're, maybe have one in the wall void or maybe have a bee swarm or something else, we all know based on a series of questions we're even sending a technician out, whether it's an appropriate underground nesting yellow jacket. And that's for us. As I mentioned, public outreach and education, so we hit all the classic media, press releases, we're in Press Democrat or the Marin Independent. And then we also hit social media the best that we can on Facebook and Instagram. Basically, finding new ways to get the message out. Hopefully, you've seen some of our advertising or some of our informational items that are out there. Again, social media posts. I want to hit this real quick just because I talked a little bit about locally transmitted dengue down in Southern California. That red line that's moving up California, that's the mosquito that transmits dengue. So Aedes aegypti, Aedes aelipictus, they're two different mosquitoes. They started, they're non-native to California. They were originally found in the L A area back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine. And then they slowly worked their way up California. Up to actually the district that I came from before I moved here, which is Shasta mosquito, I think we always saw in twenty twenty. So it definitely could be in Sonoma County, it definitely could be in Marin County based on habitat. And we're just continuing to put our surveillance out there and try to make sure that they don't get those two mosquitoes. We're getting encroached all around us though. They've had finds in Santa Clara, Alameda, Contra Costa, Solano. So we're slowly getting closer and closer to the, to the line where we're gonna be impacted by Aedes aegypti or Aedes aelipictus. And why is that a concern? Well, Aedes aegypti, one, doesn't belong in California, so it's a non-native species. And two, they transmit diseases like dengue, chicken venia, yellow fever, things that we really don't want to have to deal with in California. One of the unique things about those disease cycles where it differs from West Nile virus, West Nile virus is a bird mosquito disease and humans just kind of get in the way. With dengue, with chicken venia, they're a human mosquito disease. And so that's why we look at things like travel associated cases, because if somebody travels to an area where there's a dengue, where there's endemic dengue, and then they come back and they have those mosquitoes there that are able to transmit those diseases, that's where the risk is. They could transmit dengue locally within our populations as we've now already seen in the Southern California area, both in L A and St. Petersburg. So some of the things that we work on, I think that are kind of fun and unique, is our three D printing. So mosquito control, for those who that are hearing this for the first time today, is a very unknown industry. And because of that, it's very challenging for us to find the tools that we need to do our work. Well, three D printing has really changed the game for us because instead of having to rely on other places to get the equipment that we need, we can create our own tools. And in fact, our lab director, Dr. Fury, is gonna be presenting on a three D printed trap that she created and is now manufacturing for our district. She'll be presenting next week at she had a state conference and then also in a few months at our national conference. So just, we can now have a looking supply of our traps at quarter of the cost that it costs to buy one that's not as good over the counter. And it just gives us a lot more control over our program and ultimately gives a better program to the taxpayer, more effective, lower cost. The other element that I want to hit on is kind of sterile insect techniques. As I mentioned, in Southern California, they're dealing with dengue. And so they're looking at these strategies a lot more closely, trying to reduce those Aedes aegypti populations. Right now, in Southern California, there's several different trials that are looking at irradiated mosquitoes. So a very classic way to do what we call sterile insect techniques, where basically they use X-rays to irradiate the male mosquitoes and then release those males because they're no longer able to have viable young. So it's a way to reduce populations. It's proven to be very effective in agriculture. And so they're really trying that out on the mosquito side of things. Wobakiya and the self-lumining mosquitoes, same exact idea, they're trying to release males that are gonna be sterile in the environment, just a slightly different technique to get that to happen. Wobakiya is bacteria, the self-lumining mosquitoes is actually a genetic modification of those mosquitoes. Wobakiya has been tested in California and Fresno area, seemed to be pretty effective, eighty-five, ninety percent control. There hasn't been any tests of the self-lumining mosquitoes yet in California, but they have tested in the flora and overseas as well. We'll likely see that technology in the last ten to fifteen years. Irradiation is kind of winning the race at this point, largely because of the cost, the lower cost, lower impact. And ultimately, the science is a lot more well-edited for that technology. So whether we'll see them in Marin Sonoma or not, they can, don't have that crystal ball. The hope is that we won't be getting Aedes aegypti anytime soon and then we can focus our strategies solely on West Nile virus-bearing mosquitoes. So that's it. I robbied it through, but I'm trying to keep to ten to twelve minutes. Hopefully, I left a little bit of time for questions. That's kind of up to you guys.
Absolutely, Peter. Thank you first. Questions?
So how about in-ground for the yellow jackets? Does in one of the storm drains qualify as in-ground?
Typically, if it's associated with the structure, you're gonna need a different type of license. But with that type of stormwater, I have to, we have to see, honestly. I mean, because typically when you're talking ground nesting yellow jackets, what they're doing is they're taking over an existing burrow of some sort. They're not creating their own. I have not personally experienced any that are in stormwater structures, but as long as we don't have to change anything about the physical structure of the device, it's possible that we could do a removal.
Okay, I just wanted to add two of my toolbox. I know we noticed them a lot last year, three or four. I know we noticed them a lot last year, three or four nests in there, and they were in the city storm drains on the streets, and me being allergic to bees, obviously, I was like, I just like the plague, so I got another tool in my toolbox to give you a shout. Absolutely.
Hundred percent. Just give us a call, and we can ask a series of questions to see if it's one that we can deal with or not, or if we can't figure it out on the phone, we'll have our technician up here come take a look and see if there's something they can deal with.
Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just curious, seeing how councilmember Reelard brought yellow jackets. I know I'm in Yordi Creek, but they have a infestation of, I think they're either yellow jackets or hornets, but you can't even sit at the picnic tables without them just storming on you. I went up there with my wife a couple of years ago, it was that bad then, with a couple hamburgers when we're gone, and we had to leave them on the table, and my car didn't get in the car, it was so bad. So I'm just wondering, have you heard anything about Yordi Creek area or up there with the...
I mean, so in general, those areas that are going to be a bit more slavatic or like campground, things like that, you're going to see more yellow jackets actively foraging about yellow jackets. Often, there's not a nest that will do removals for, but if issues are compounding or impacting people that are trying to use those recreation areas, just give us a call. It's something we can figure out if we can handle or not. Ultimately, we need to know where the nests are, and in those types of environments, there's often many, and so tracking them down and figuring out whether the property owner even would allow it, especially if it's not privately owned, we can definitely do that navigation for you. So if you have concerns with yellow jackets, just give us a call, and we'll do all the math behind it.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make a comment that I hope that you can do some Lone Star research, because the simple Google search shows that there are six counties already, and like I told you earlier today on the telephone, I've seen two, and I think definitely Lone Star ticks, and I'm not sure if anyone's seen them, and they're both in the right county. So I just think we need to, you know, kind of be on the lookout.
Hundred percent. We are always on the lookout, and next time you see Lone Star ticks, please collect them, take a photo, whatever you can. We have active feelers out all the time. Our lab director, Dr. Fury, we talked actually, I could call right after, and she said, yeah, if they have some, we're constantly looking. Our city pitch representative in Richmond area also would be interested, but if you give us a call when you see those ticks, we're always, we follow up on every single Lone Star tick request or hitchhiking, and we go out into our own ecological study, basically tick lighting, to see if we can find established populations, because there is a difference between established population and those that are hitchhiking on somebody else moving from an area where they may or may not be endemic. So yeah, hundred percent, so let us know, happy to try to figure it out.
And also, like, you know, I'm also hoping that you guys can keep up, you know, researching online river settings, to, you know, just so we know, like, maybe they're not, you know, a bunch of people reporting, and we're in personnel, but I think if they're moving up to sort of the California.
Yeah, so I know what you're talking about in terms of the six counties. So those are areas where those ticks have been found, but not areas where those ticks are endemic. They're not living there, there's not constant population. So there's a difference between finding some sort of entomological information, like a mosquito, a tick, and finding populations that are breeding and actually living there. So we would, that's exactly what we would try to do, is if you found a Lone Star tick, we would try to identify whether that tick is actually breeding in that area and causing more ticks, or if it was just a hitchhiker coming from a different area.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a quick comment or question? Would you give our staff a counter, something in one of the parks to call you?
Yeah.
So you're around for a calling?
Hundred percent. Yeah, we work all the time with other cities, with other counties, both Marin and Sonoma. We're here to be a partner.
Peter, thank you very much for your time and your amazing presentation. Appreciate you coming up here.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the time, guys. Thanks for saying.
All right, we'll move into F, the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council. Unless any council member or member of the public requests an item be removed, consent is accepted. Does anyone would like to pull any items? I would like to pull F2. Do we have a motion for F1, 3, and 4?
Move F1, 3, and 4, consent calendar.
I agree with Senator Page.
Vice Mayor is the first, Councilmember Morris turns the second. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Passes 4-0, Councilmember Lastky Deppson. Okay, F2, consider adoption of a resolution to authorize the city management to execute a contract with Miracle Place Systems for the procurement and installation of a new playground equipment at Pover Park, amount to $269,000, $269,000 and $244,000 and $0.06. The reason I bolded this is I just wanted to make sure that I got a shout-out to Hector from our crew, and totally thank you for making sure this happened, and we've been trying for a couple of years to get this to go. So between you and Kevin, if you love seeing things happen. So that was the only reason I bolded it. I don't need any explanations or anything. Thank you on that. Anyone else have any comments on this?
Yeah, I want to thank Hector, too, because we've been battling that out at the subcommittee for, like I said, at least two years, and it was one of those ones where we were like, okay, let's quit talking about this, so I'm super glad that's covered, and so thank you very much, and all your guys, and whenever it goes, you know, so that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a quick comment regarding this item? Seeing them, bringing back any questions for it?
Move F2 on consent calendar.
I second that motion.
First, Vice Mayor, second, Councilmember Morris turn, all in Bay City Ave.
Aye.
Aye.
Post, state nay. Passes 4-0, Councilmember Lastky Madison. We move into new business, page one, direction on establishment of an outside service agreement for Third Water Ranch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can come on, probably. So you may recall, we were approached by Third Water Ranch, a member of BGP, which happened last November, the Urban World Fundry, is one of many lines that need to be moved in order to get that into town, which is their goal, because they need water, and in that degree, kind of maximize what they can do under the county's timing, so that's part of it. I think what's kind of new since all of that, and I'll let Howard describe it, but they found that their water has arsenic in it, and it's kind of a dire situation. They're currently purchasing water from Austin, trucking it up there and filling their tanks. And so this would be kind of, we want to take your temperature on whether, how you feel about outside service agreement. If you give us direction to do that, we will start working on it. There will be a fee that Third Water Ranch will need to pay, we have to go to Alex, and there's some deal points that go into the agreements. And if we're given the green light tonight, we'll start working with them and get that back to the council as soon as possible. Ultimately, it has to do with some kind of lab go, so it goes down us first, we approve, then they have to go to lab go. And what they're going to do, provide then the opportunity to pipe water up there, and just, as we discussed, that would be, it's on you, in terms of bringing it up there, and I know Derek went up there and kind of walked around with them, and, you know, with some ideas. So I'll just turn it over to you, Howard.
Right, yeah, thank you very much, and thank you, good to see you all over the city council. And so, as me, we're all about property back six and a half years ago, in 2018, you know, with the intent of writing a, my mom lived in a situation where it developed disabled children, but we had some other tenants on the property, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. So we first tested our water back in August, so one of the owners said, you know, hey, I was living in the water tank, and it looked a little strange, needs some contaminants potentially, so we tested it, and those contaminants were fine, but what wasn't fine was the arsenic, and we were, I think, the highest or second highest federal recorder to count, so right around seven hundred to a thousand parts per billion, and global limits ten. So, and at that level, we investigated filtering in the water for about three months with two different companies, and essentially, the conclusion is, at that level of arsenic, you really, it's not what you do. You could get rid of those systems online, but it's just going to go south at some point, and it's just not viable. So, you know, what we did, pretty much gave, we divided public waters over to all of our tenants, and then we started trucking water even before getting the ability to get Overdale City water, we were buying from private water companies for quite a few months, and basically turned shut our well up since early November. Let's see, next slide. And one other thing, too, you know, this property's been around forever, and it's always been a wild property, and the well that we're currently on was drilled in 2016, but I guess nobody ever really tested why it was. So, yeah, so we're in a situation right now where we're paying, you know, a fair amount of money, pay for the truck, water trucks to come in, fill up the fire item and come to our property. So the two things that are challenging for us, number one is financially challenging the cost of private line, and so we're continuing to be in the red there. Secondly, it's also damaging our roads, and also, two, the other thing that's challenging for us in particular, too, one more tenant, Melissa Jeanette and William, or Aspen William, who run an elder-complished elder care facility on our property, and they've been told by their regulating agency, and this is Melissa right here, that they cannot accept any tenants with the current water situation, and even though we're filling the water tank with Overdale City water, you know, the water board has to approve and bless us before, you know, before they can accept new clients, and they're currently at about fifty percent capacity, so it's really financially hurtful for them, so. And, yeah, assuming you all approve this motion, we'll be writing that check for the $5,725, probably be received either late this week or early next week. So we're just asking for your consideration for connecting to Overdale City water, and I think the idea is to do the temporary connection first, and then eventually a long-term connection.
Not at this point, Howard, but what I do want to hear is Alex, a little bit more of the specifics, maybe, or whatever.
So Derek can speak to the technical, which, I mean, at this point, they're recovering the cost, and you may remember, and the measure, too, I went to the voter, excuse me, I went to the voters to explain the growth ground reserving anticipation, something like this happening, so the next step is to go to lab go, the outside service agreement. By going through this process, we're not committed to paying for any of the improvements or anything like that. Similar agreements we've had in the past with Six Acres or South Overdale have specified that, that, you know, it's contingent of someone else, you know, paying for that, so by proofless or by directing staff, you know, those final terms will come back, but that would be our, never put minimum in the city on for these large improvements, and, you know, once they're effective, there'll be a rate here of any rates based, like everyone.
So it'll be put in at the code, or is it a temporary type, or how does that work
Currently, right now, they would have to borrow pieces through other private properties before we can talk about a city standard install. They would call it something on the temporary location, so they would provide back for a year's start, and it goes through all after process before the temporary direct allocation is set up. And that would be the advantage of the city section line, and they would be responsible for any temporary easements across the state that.
The one thing I would ask is that if there's any portion of the week to do that is up to city standards, so that doesn't have to be redundant.
Yeah.
Next thing, there comes on the future.
Yeah, hot path meter and back for all, happens in the same year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I believe you mentioned that the water agency has to approve everything prior to you being able to accept any new patients, et cetera?
I said, I think that before, the elder care facility can accept any new clients, I think the water board and their regulating agency have to also.
I guess the concern I may have is, you make a joint agreement with the city, and then the water agency comes out and takes a look at it, and they don't like it, you know, you have to do something different, and now you're out $5,200. I want to make sure that if something like that happens, that the city takes no responsibility or liability with that. I'm not sure if you have to go to them first with schematics and say, this is how we're going to do it, or how that's going to work.
Yeah, I don't know specifically, but I do know that they're very much in favor of connecting the city water. They told us, basically, for the very first time that they came to our property, you know, at that time, we were still investigating filtration solutions, and they said, that's not your best option, it's not going to work, we highly recommend you connect to city water. But in terms of specific, I would certainly need contact with them, like, I communicate with them pretty regularly.
Well, the only thing, I guess where I'm going with this, two calls. Number one, I'd like to see the city indemnified to some extent, if that's even possible, should the water agency not allow what they want to do afterwards. And then, secondly, Kevin, I'm not sure, I think you mentioned somewhere around $5,200 for the...
Yeah, as part of our fee schedule, we actually have an outside service agreement, it's $5725.
Okay, well, yeah, and I'd like to see that collected upfront. You know, over the last year or so, I've really gotten very conscious of fees that are due to the city that never seem to get paid, so nothing against you personally, but, you know, I just want to make sure that the money's on deposit before we do it, and then I want to make sure that what we do is going to be last five in the way, in what how the city water agency, however you have to do that. That would be my suggestion.
Right, and I just want to get back, would the water agency get back with Kevin, and maybe, or come back, or whatever you prefer?
Mr. Morris, turn.
I just think that, you know, it's important that we do whatever works out the best for the city and you, because water's very important, and you have a lot of people there that need water, so I'm all for it.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments? Please report.
Reelard Miles, resident in Claudio, there's just one question and answer that I haven't heard, is with your previous water use, how much water are we talking about?
We have about thirty residents on the property, and it's not me, but the others.
I think I signed a court meeting.
Thank you very much. Now, this is just another step forward. You get a measure CC, this is a portion of recent work, we're looking forward to moving towards this, doing a write-off, so it sounds like all my questions have been answered in the last. Kevin, do you have a good direction from us to move forward? And I think I hope we're all ready for good suggestions of impact identification, and just make sure that we pay on our fees and everything. Thank you so much, really appreciate it, and we'll get this going. All right, we'll move into subcommittee reports, intercommittee reports, never been any meetings due to the end of the year and reorganization, so all your improvements and agendas will be on our website. We have no letters of support or opposition at this time. City manager report, number four. City attorney report. Councilmember reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one note, you know, after twenty-two years, twenty-three years serving under the city council, I find it necessary for me to resign my position as a council member to the city of Overdale. I really like to thank staff for their accommodations for me over the last few years, and I will be relocating at some point back on the East Coast to be closer to family, and I'm really missing my Overdale, and hopefully, I'll be back to visit from time to time. But my effective date of resignation would be the end of February. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, city staff, for all the courages that you've shown me.
I just want to bring up, we've had more community-type stuff, but we have been, council members, myself have been, had the idea of getting a hub up here for, you know, not homeless, not just homeless, but, you know, mental health and everything, and trying to find a thing with it. And I'd like to, I'd like to thank Jade Waymouth from the Family Asana. We actually had a good sit-down with her, it was a very productive meeting, and I'm not going to go into it too much, but I do think she's going to move this forward, and I just wanted to get it on the record that, yes, Cloverdale will give her a hand doing things on this. We were kind of, there was some mad blood going around, it's no longer, and I think everything's going to work out great for this, so we support her on that a hundred percent, so, thank you.
Yes, change figures is amazing, all the time. I'm not going to go into all the good advice and move this to yourself, something we need to stay up on. Thank you for, I think, that's hard, for the possible use.
Well, I have to say, I'm really, I have to say, I'm really excited, because this is an opportune time for me to make this transition in my life, and I feel so comfortable leaving the city in your hands. A hometown boy, you know how I feel about that, and you do a fantastic job, as do my fellow councilmembers. So I feel I'm leaving at a good, at a good time. The city will probably have a little bit of a surplus, we have a tax initiative to repay our roads, it's a good time for me, so, thank you.
I just want to say I'm happy that you're going with your family on the East Coast, but you'll be growing this here in Overdale.
One item I'll, you want to report out on is clarification for our measure DD that just passed. A lot of people are talking about when the money comes in and how it's going to work. Nothing is even starting to be collected as a tax until after April 1st, so any projects you see going on, I don't think that, that is still just our typical fixing and patching and things for our roads. I just want to make it clear that no one's getting charged for that DD tax until after April 1st. With that said, I can move into council direction on any future agenda items, seeing none? Anyone in the audience who think you, you have your order? All right, thank you, everyone, we even adjourned at 6:52. Next meeting is scheduled for February 12th, 2025.